Good morning, I'm Wenassias and welcome to the regular meeting of North Coritha Council for February eighteenth. Um, as you can see, we are meeting virtually and I'd like to remind folks at the start of all our meetings that our meetings are record recorded and they are uploaded to our YouTube channel. So um it just like for folks to know that anybody who speaks publicly at a meeting may have their names and their opinions um that they have expressed, recorded electronically and uh maybe included in our meeting minutes. So just be aware of that. And before we begin, council would like to acknowledge that we meet. Um even though we're meeting virtually today, we are meeting on the traditional lands of the Michisagi Anishna Bagh First Nations here in Ontario, Canada. And where I am, the Zapotec First Nations in Oaxaca, Mexico. We honor and recognize the original people of the lands where we live, work, and vacation. Council follows this indigenous practice of acknowledgement to foster respectful deliberations, thoughtful collaboration, and wise decision-making in our service to this community. And before we get into our business, council would also like to take a moment to honor the passing of Roman Mizuk. Roman served on North Coritha Council from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-two and was also a member of the former Planning Advisory Committee. Council would like to extend our deepest sympathies and condolences to hi- to his friends and his family. And I'd like for everyone to please join me in a moment of silence as we remember Roman. Thank you, everyone. Okay, and I would now ask if there is any member of council that has a pecuniary interest with any of the matters before us today? Seeing none, we will move on, but like I always say, if you discover you've got one, you know what you need to do. And you need to declare it and remove yourself from those parts of the proceedings. And with that, uh we'll move on to adoption of the agenda, and I believe there are some additions. Connie, if you could identify those for us, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have three additions. They have been um published out February fourteenth as an addendum. The first one is under administration, a letter of support for the county cap application. And the next item that is listed under correspondence, uh which is the minister's level letter, social and economic prosperity review, we would like to move that to business arising from the previous minutes. And lastly, under correspondence for action, a resolution regarding provincial regulations needed to restrict keeping of non-native exotic wild animals.
Okay, thank you for that. Can I have a mover uh to adopt the amended agenda, please? Moved by Colin, seconded by Ruth Ann. All those in favor? That agenda has been adopted. And now I will declare that we are going into a statutory public hearing uh for the purpose of hearing three zone amendment applications. Public hearings uh uh provide an opportunity for residents to request relief from planning rules and regulations. And it also provides an opportunity for members of the public to provide comment on those requests for relief. While council encourages public comments, we do note that recent changes to the Planning Act have restricted the right uh to appeal uh council decisions uh to certain prescribed individuals, bodies, and agencies. And for those, there is still a twenty-day appeal period from the date that the notice of the decision is posted. So I think I got everything covered, and without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our planner Emily. Good morning, welcome, and please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um I will start us off this morning with zoning by law amendment application Z A ten twenty-four Gilmore, which concerns certain lands located in part of Lot Nine, Concession Ten, in the Shandos Ward, municipally known as Twenty Hawks Bay Lane. The subject property is approximately zero point two nine hectares in area and has approximately thirty-six point nine meters of shoreline frontage on Shandos Lake. The property is accessed from Hawks Bay Lane being a private road and a service by a private individual septic system and water intake from Shandos Lake. The property is quite densely vegetated towards the rear, um but substantially cleared of vegetation in the water yard. And the property does slope very steeply down towards the lake, leveling leveling out in that water yard. At present, the property is developed in the form of a one-story dwelling, having an area of eighty-five point five square meters and a height of approximately five meters, together with thirty-three point one square meters of attached decks. The water yard for the existing dwelling and attached decks are eighteen point three meters and fifteen point eight meters respectively. Other development on the property includes a boathouse with attached decks and a storage shed. The storage shed is proposed to be demolished in future. Application Z A ten twenty-four proposes to substantially redevelop the property through the reconstruction and enlargement of the late uh existing legal non-compliant dwelling and the construction of a new detached garage. The proposed two-story dwelling would have an area of one hundred thirty-five square meters and a height of nine point two meters, together with sixty-two point four square meters of attached decks and porches. Water setbacks to the proposed dwelling and attached decks would be improved to twenty-six point seven meters and twenty-two point four meters respectively. The proposed one-and-a-half-story garage would have an area of seventy-five point eight square meters and a height of seven point two meters. The proposed garage would exceed the required thirty-meter water setback. The application further proposes to decommission the existing septic system, which is located within the required water setback, and install a new septic system to the rear of the proposed garage. The proposed septic system would likewise exceed the required thirty-meter water setback. To permit the proposed redevelopment, application Z A ten twenty-four requests relief from the following sections of the zoning by law. Sections six point two K and three point thirty C to permit the reconstruction and expansion of a legal non-compliant dwelling at a high-water mark setback of twenty-six point seven meters. Section three point one eight B four to permit the main dwelling to have a height of nine point two meters. Section three point thirty G to permit a maximum deck depth of four point three meters from the main dwelling. Sections three point D one, sorry, three point one D one and six point two F one to permit a maximum accessory lot coverage of five point seven percent. Section three point one H six to permit a minimum northern interior side yard of four meters for the detached garage and section three point one eight C to permit development, um which requires relief from the applicable provisions of the zoning by law on an existing undersized lot. As for the Planning Act, decisions on planning matters are required to be consistent with the plant provincial planning statement and to conform or otherwise not conflict with the official plan. Under the policies of the provincial planning statement, the subject property is considered rural lands. Resource-based recreational uses, including recreational dwellings for seasonal accommodation and related accessory uses and buildings, are permitted on rural lands. Development is to be sustained by rural service levels and appropriate to existing or planned infrastructure. Given that the application proposes the replacement of an existing recreational dwelling and that the property can be adequately serviced by private individual water and sewage systems, the application is not anticipated to result in a strain on rural service levels and the existing infrastructure. The application is considered consistent with the PPS. The subject property is designated shoreline areas on the waterfront under the County of Peterborough official plan and seasonal residential under the local component for North Coritha. Policies of the official plan permit the reconstruction and expansion of existing dwellings within thirty meters of the high watermark, provided that no further encroachment towards the water body results. The proposed dwelling and attached deck represent improvements of eight point four meters and six point six meters respectively over the existing. It is anticipated that considerable site alteration and vegetation removal will be required to facilitate the proposed redevelopment, likely resulting in an increase uh in the dominance of built form on the property. There is minimal buffering offered by vegetation in the water yard at present. However, the improved water setbacks are expected to offer some mitigation of visual impact. Pre-consultation comments issued by staff back in the summer uh recommended that vegetation removal be minimized to the greatest extent possible and that the property owners engage in revegetation in the water yard once the project has been completed. Policies of the official plan also require the appropriate conservation of archaeological resources. The applicant completed a stage one and two archaeological assessment, and the study concluded that the property contains no archaeological resources. The application therefore does not conflict with the general intent of the official plan. The subject property is currently zoned shoreline residential under the township zoning by law. As noted earlier, the application requests relief from various sections of the zoning by law to facilitate the proposed redevelopment. Section three point three zero C of the zoning by law again allows for the reconstruction and expansion of legal non-compliant dwellings at the existing deficient water setback, subject to certain limitations on lateral width and the height of the replacement dwelling, uh which are provided in section three point one eight. As mentioned previously, the new dwelling would result in significant improvements to the water setbacks of the existing dwelling. Section three point one eight limits the height increase of dwellings within uh fifteen to thirty meters from the high watermark to two point four meters. As proposed, the new dwelling would result in a height increase of four point two meters. Although exceeding the permitted height increase, the dwelling would remain within the maximum height otherwise in effect for the S R zone being ten meters. And the dwelling is only sufficient, slightly deficient from the required uh water yard where the ten-meter height would be permitted as of right. Improved water setbacks and bringing the dwelling into compliance with the southern side yard are anticipated to reduce visual impacts associated with the proposed height increase for the dwelling from the short line and the southern adjacent property. The application seeks relief from section three point three zero G to permit a maximum deck depth of four point three meters from the main dwelling. Whereas the maximum uh deck depth permitted for an attached deck located in the required water yard is um three point seven meters. Additional depth is requested due to the irregularity of the lakeside face of the dwelling and much of the proposed deck would have a depth of three point five meters, which would otherwise be compliant with the zoning by law. Uh no exceedance of lot coverage or further encroachment towards the water body would result from granting this relief. As proposed, the detached garage would result in an accessory lot coverage of five point seven percent, whereas accessory lot coverage is otherwise limited to five percent of the total lot area. Although the permitted total accessory lot coverage would be exceeded, the proposed garage itself would not exceed the permitted accessory lot coverage for an individual building also being five percent. All existing and proposed development would produce a lot coverage of twelve point five percent, which is within the fifteen percent guideline for total lot coverage on property's own shoreline residential. A northern interior side yard of four meters is requested for the proposed detached garage, whereas a minimum interior side yard of four point five meters is otherwise required. It is anticipated that dense vegetation at the northern side lot line will offer adequate buffering to the northern adjacent property. The application is therefore considered to uphold the general intent and purpose of the zoning by law. Agency comments have been received from Pro Valley Conservation Authority, Enbridge Gas, and Ministry of Transportation. None have identified any concerns with the proposed zoning by law amendment. However, CBCA does note that a work permit would be required for the proposed dwelling and attached decks uh and may be required for the proposed garage. I have received um two submissions um from the public regarding uh this application. Um, the first one I will speak to came from the owner of the adjacent property at twenty-two Hawks Bay Lane, Boris Kostyak. Um Boris has raised concerns regarding the existing driveway on the property. Um he does note that the driveway which was formerly surfaced with gravel has been recently resurfaced with reclaimed asphalt material. The resurfacing has resulted in increased runoff uh and ditching along the shared property line. He also knows the possibility of pollutants leaching from the reclaimed asphalt into the groundwater and eventually uh into the lake. Um to hopefully minimize uh these issues. Um Boris would like to see vegetation plantings along the property line to minimize the runoff and ditching um as well as slope of the existing driveway altered to direct runoff away from his property. Um he also noted in further correspondence that the installation of a cash basin or uh piping to redirect rainwater to the front of the subject property rather than down the side lot line um would be preferable. Um Boris further mentioned that he does not agree with the staff report that the height of the proposed dwelling is appropriate. Um nor that the proposed southern side yard of four point five meters um would offer appropriate mitigation of visual impact from his property. Um and he would like to see the dwelling located um farther towards the north side of the property. Um the second submission I received was from Ambrose Moran. Um Ambrose Moran notes that he has no objections to the application. Um being approved by council as submitted um and going forward, he would like to see council support his previous submissions to exempt existing lots of record from being unfairly restricted to the thirty-meter building setback. Um would rather see a twenty-meter setback in place, which would eliminate the need for future zoning amendment applications. Um he did send again those couple of submissions, um which I would be um happy to provide counsel in future um for their consideration. Um based on this analysis, staff remain of the opinion that the application represents good planning. And it is recommended that application A Z A ten twenty-four be approved, subject to council's considerations of the comments received. That's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Emily. Very well done. And at this point, I would like to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is here and would like to provide further information to what was presented by our planner. And I'm just not sure if I don't see any any indication on the screen. Anybody like a video, turn your video on or raise your hand if you wanted to speak. Um if not, that's fine. We'll move on if there are members of the public that are here that would like to provide comment on this application. This is your opportunity to do so. And Emily was, you were very good to uh share the uh the written submissions that were provided as well. Um, okay, I don't see any indication of anybody that would like to speak, so now I'm going to go to members of council for their questions or comments, and Jim Whalen, start us off, please.
Thanks very much. Um Emily, that um tho- those pictures are really nice to have on the right on the thing so we can see them and uh that was a good video this morning of the property too. Um um re- really shows you what you're working with. So um um when you're ready, I make make I'd make a motion, Madam Chair.
Or Madam Chairman. Okay, well, let's just hold on for a second. I'm just gonna check in with the rest of council. Do you have any questions or comments on the application? Colin, please go ahead.
Hey, just regarding the driveway, can I confirm that we don't have any sort of permitting process for the type of work that was completed?
Uh through you, Madam Mayor. Uh yes, that's correct, councillor, that we do not currently have any site alteration bylaws in place that would um would require a permit for resurfacing a driveway.
Um, I would also like to ask, um have the comments that were um provided to staff, have they been submitted to or have they been provided to um the applicant? And if not, can they be provided?
Absolutely, yes. Um I was having ongoing correspondence with the neighboring property owner, so I wanted to make sure that everything he would like to say was said um before I sent it on to the applicant. Um but I'm I will send that on to the applicant now, and I just received Ambrose's um this morning, so I can forward those to the applicant as well.
Perfect. Thank you. That's important. Um, okay, all right. Well, Jim, I'm gonna go uh back to you and please uh bring us motion.
I move, um Madam Chairman, the council approve application Z A dash ten dash twenty-four as as written.
Okay, is there a second for that? Seconded by Ruth Ann. All those in favor of the motion? That motion is approved. Connie, could you read the bylaw for us, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I just have to go to my other screen here. The bylaw of the township under provisions of section thirty-four of the Planning Act as amended to a men's zoning by law twenty-six twenty thirteen with respect to the lands described as part lot nine concession ten geographic area of Shandos, roll number fifteen thirty-six zero one zero one hundred zero seven five.
Okay, can I have a mover for that bylaw, please? Moved by Jim O'Shea, seconded by Ruth Ann. All those in favor? That bylaw has been approved. Okay, and our next application, Emily, could you please go? Oh, pardon me, wait a second, I see. Uh Dr. Coster, you've, oh, you've got your hand up. Hang on here. Why can't I? Oh.
I'm trying to. I can hear you. I don't know.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, well, Emily mentioned some of the uh concerns that I had with the uh plan itself. I sent uh an image of an overlay of the property, and it shows that the uh lines that they have down there as a thirty-meter water setback is incorrect on the site plan that they submitted to you based on my property site plan. That was my o- my overlay. Um now she mentions that the building wants is going to be thirty thirty feet high or so. But is that from the front of the property? As it faces the water or at the rear of the property or halfway down the property? So where is that thirty-foot height?
Doctor Coster, I I'm gonna have to stop you there because we just dealt with that application. We just passed the zoning amendment.
That's right. I never got a chance to get in. That's why.
Oh, well, she did. She be we you she did read your your letter with with those concerns as well. So I'm just what I'm thinking is some of the questions that you have, if you wanted to follow up with staff um and just to ensure that um you know your concerns with respect to the site plan or to the to the setbacks, you could go over that with staff, but but we need to move on to the next application now. Okay?
Well, I'd still like to have this uh reconsidered or whatever.
If it's possible. The motion to.
Well, yes, I know you passed the motion, but I never had a chance. I was every time I tried to get in, I was unmuted or I was muted again, muted again, so.
Okay, all right. Well, like I said, please please definitely follow up with staff. They'd be happy to to work with you. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so Emily, if you could go on with the next application, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um the next application is Z A eleven twenty-four Johnson, which pertains to two properties located in part of Lot Two, Concession Six, in the Burley Ward, municipally known as seven seven two and seven nine four Northeast Bay Road. The application has been submitted in fulfillment of the conditions imposed on consent application B dash eighty dash twenty-four, which was granted provisional approval on November thirteenth of last year. The purpose of the consent application is to provide a lot addition of zero point eleven hectares um together with fifteen point three meters of frontage along Stony Lake to the property at seven nine four Northeast Bay Road from the property located at seven seven two Northeast Bay Road. The property at seven seven two Northeast Bay Road is currently vacant but was formerly developed for recreational residential use, and it is anticipated that such use will be reestablished in the future. The property at seven nine four Northeast Bay Road is currently developed for permanent residential use in the form of a dwelling and is serviced by a private individual septic system and well. Both properties are accessed from Northeast Bay Road being a county road and seven seven two Northeast Bay Road does benefit from an ice uh from an easement for access purposes over seven nine four Northeast Bay Road. No new development is proposed together with the zoning by law amendment application. Application Z A eleven twenty-four proposes to establish uniform zoning for the resultant enlarged parcel and to recognize a lot area and lot frontage deficiencies arising from the approval of the consent application. As for the Planning Act, decisions on planning matters are required to be consistent with the provincial planning statement and otherwise conform to or not conflict with the official plan. Under the policies of the provincial planning statement, the subject properties are considered rural lands. On rural lands, permitted uses include resource-based recreational um uses um including seasonal dwellings not included uh not not intended as permanent residences as well as residential development where site conditions are suitable for the long-term provision of appropriate sewage and water services. Development is to be sustained by existing service rural level rural service levels and shall be appropriate to the existing or planned infrastructure. The existing and anticipated future uses of the properties do conform to those permitted under the PPS, and no further development is proposed together with this application. The application is therefore considered consistent with the PPS. The subject properties are designated shoreline areas on the waterfront under the County of Peterborough official plan and primarily seasonal residential under the local component for the township of North Coritha. However, a portion of the lands along the shoreline have been designated environmental constraint uh in correspondence with the mapped floodplain for Stony Lake. As noted earlier, this amendment seeks to recognize lot area and lot frontage deficiencies. Both the proposed reduced lot area for the retained parcel and the proposed reduced lot frontage for the resultant enlarged parcel do appear to be in keeping with those of surrounding properties. Staff of the building department have confirmed that the reduced lot area would not result in any issues in installing a septic system on the retained parcel. No new development is proposed at this time. Therefore, the current balance between built and natural form will be maintained on both properties. The application therefore does not conflict with the intent of the official plan. Uh following the provisional approval of the consent application, seven seven two Northeast Bay Road is zoned shoreline residential while seven nine four Northeast Bay Road is zoned shoreline residential permanent and shoreline residential. For both zones, the minimum lot area is zero point five hectares and the minimum lot frontage is forty-six meters. Where a lot has frontage on both a navigable waterway and a public street, the water frontage is considered the lot frontage. The retained parcel having an area of zero point two five hectares would be deficient from the minimum lot area requirement, but would continue to exceed the minimum lot frontage requirement, having fifty-seven point seven meters of frontage along Stony Lake. Notwithstanding the deficient lot area, it is anticipated that sufficient area would be maintained for a building envelope and a septic system. The resultant enlarged parcel having fifteen point three meters of frontage on Stony Lake would be deficient from the minimum lot frontage requirement, but would continue to exceed the minimum lot area requirement uh having an area of zero point seven one hectares. Although the frontage would be deficient, um it would be providing the property with frontage on a navigable waterway, which does improve the property's conformity with the intent of the shoreline residential permanent zone, which is applicable to waterfront lots. The proposed amendment would rezone the retained lot from shoreline residential to a site-specific shoreline residential zone to recognize its deficient lot frontage and would also rezone the resultant enlarged parcel from shoreline residential permanent and shoreline residential to shoreline residential permanent exception to achieve uniform zoning and recognize its deficient lot frontage. The application is therefore considered to uphold the general intent and purpose of the zoning by law. Agency comments were received from M T O and Enbridge Gas. Uh neither agency noted any concerns with the application and the properties would be outside of M T O's permit control area. I have received one submission from member of the public um from a neighboring property owner at seven five four Northeast Bay Road, Ray Northie. He knows concerns regarding the proportionally high density of boathouses and docks for the size of Northeast Bay and that allowing the severance to proceed through the approval of the zoning by law amendment application will. And that allowing the severance to proceed through the approval of the zoning by law amendment application will. Exacerbate these existing conditions. Mister Northe further notes that it appears a large parking area has been created on the retained parcel. And anticipates that the property will be used for. Mainland parking and docking uh, to water access properties or islands on Stony Lake. He requests that the township determine. What the retained parcel is to be used for. Prior to allowing the severance to proceed by way of approval of the zoning by law amendment application. Um, based on this analysis, staff remain of the opinion that the application represents good planning and it is recommended that Z A eleven. Twenty four be approved, subject to council's consideration of the comments received. That's my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that, Emily. Um, now I would ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative uh, would like to speak and provide further information. To what was presented by our planner. This is your opportunity to do so. Just raise your hand or. Turn on your video. It's not required, but if not, then we'll go, oh, pardon me. I did see you, Mister Johnson, good morning, you wanna sh- um. Unblock or open your video up? And uh. Think it's going out and I see another, hang on, we're gonna do it, so I'm assuming you are the applicant, Mister Johnson? I'm gonna get you just to start your video, if you can.
Um, I'm not that comfortable with Zoom, so I'm not sure how to start my video, oh, here we go, let's try this. Am I with you now?
Yep, there you are, good morning, please go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Good morning, Madam Mayor and councilors. I really don't have much to add to it, Emily has done an excellent job of identifying all the issues. And um, this um, motion was brought uh, before council. Um, back during the initial uh, application to the county for the severance and. Uh, these were the conditions that were imposed by council at that time.
Okay, all right, well, if there are any questions that uh, come up, um, I'll certainly give you an opportunity to respond to them, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so now I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that is here that would like to provide comment. On uh, this application, and I do see a hand up, uh, Eldon Horner, good morning, Mister Horner, and uh, please go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, um, first I should explain uh, why I'm here, I'm counsel for Ray Northe and for Barbara Northe. Who owns the property further around the end of of Northeast Bay, neither could be here, one's out of the country and and one's on a family. Uh, travel event, so they asked if I would appear as counsel for them simply to. Reiterate Mister Northe submissions, which I won't uh, go back to, I think Madam Planner did a good job of. Of providing his concerns. Barbara Northe's concerns are the same. The biggest issue is traffic in what's a congested area of Northeast Bay now. Uh, this application will provide one further boat access, we assume for seven nine four. Um, which adding one boat is is not that big a. An issue, but council should be aware, there are some sixteen uh, boat houses or docks. In the end of Northeast Bay now, you'll see them on the key map beside seven seven two, there's a number of very narrow. Accesses to boat houses, um, there's a lot of traffic in and out of this bay and there are young children. Quite often at the end of the bay, there's a floating dock, everybody has to navigate, it's uh, I appreciate that. Particular boat traffic risks may not fit directly into the the P P S or the official plan or the zoning by law, but I do think it's something. Council needs to consider and the scope of the amendment is of significance, the. Existing lot at seven seven two is seventy two percent of the required area, it's now gonna be fifty percent. Of the required area and quite frankly, I I appreciate. Uh, Madam Planner's comments that it is sufficient area to house a dwelling, a well and a septic. Uh, but I would expect they would have to be very constrained, um, a very small building envelope, given that it's a. Wide but not very deep lot, to try and fit a residence there will be very difficult. And it's much more likely, as was pointed out by Ray Northe and his written submissions. That what's gonna happen is this will be a request to turn it into a number of more. Docks and parking access for cottage properties. Appreciate uh, though that that's not a consideration directly for council today, but this very small. Size of the retained parcel. While it's wide, it's very, very shallow. And development there is gonna be particularly problematic and and cause concerns for the other neighbors. I won't ramble on, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to at least make those submissions, council, um. We are very concerned, those of us, um, I'm there quite a bit, although I have no ownership. Take in the property. Thank you for hearing me this morning.
All right, thank you very much. And um, I'm just gonna look, is there anybody else that would like to provide comment? On this application, uh, you know what, I'm just gonna go back, Mister Johnson, did you want to perhaps respond to um, some of the issues that Mister Horner raised?
Yeah, I can appreciate his his concern for increased boating activity, I think that's an issue all over. However, um, it is what it is with the boat houses that are already there and would have no bearing on the property. I do know, um, the individual that owned seven seven two. Did um, have the small cottage that was on the lot removed in the fall when he did clearing and so forth. And during my last discussion with him at that time, he was a gave me the um, impression that he had sought. And was see going to um, erect another small building basically on the same footprint of what was tore down. Um, I think if there's any issue with dockage or any of that nature. That would probably be something that would be better dealt with uh, Parks Canada. Uh, who have control over the water on Stony Lake. Um, I know my intent, there's no denying, I will. When this is approved, I will put a dock in and I will have a boat that I will tie up. Hence the need for the waterfront access. And that's about all I can offer on this.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for that, um. All right, anybody else have any other comments? I don't see, and I just wanted to ask once more. Um, I'm gonna go now to members of council, if you have questions or comments, this is your opportunity. Uh, Jim Whalen, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, good morning, Mister Johnson, good morning, Mister Horner, uh, the um. Um, Emily, um, uh, this came before us for a severance, um. And um, we're the ones who put the condition on that this had, this would be passed, you know, after the severance, but the. Uh, severance has been approved, um, now by county council, hasn't it?
Yes, that's correct, it was provisionally approved on November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the applicant is now in the process of fulfilling the. Conditions imposed by the township and county.
So what we're doing basically is just a merger agreement.
It is for a lot addition, yeah, so there's no new lot to be created here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I am looking for a motion. Calling.
I'll move that council approved zoning by law amendment application Z A eleven twenty four.
Hey, is there a second for that? Seconded by Jim O'Shea, all those in favor of the motion? That motion is approved, all right, thank you very much, and Connie, can I ask that you uh, read the bylaw for this, please?
Goodbye, Mayor, it is a bylaw to amend zoning by law twenty six twenty thirteen. With respect to the lands described as, excuse me, part lot two concession six geographic area of Burley County of Peterborough. Roll number fifteen thirty six zero two zero 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 one six zero zero zero.
All right, can I have a mover for that bylaw, please? Moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Jim O'Shea, all those in favor? That bylaw has been approved, all right, we're on to our third and final uh, application, please go ahead, Emily.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, zoning by law amendment application Z A twelve twenty four. Pertains to certain lands located in part of lot thirty two concession ten in the Shandos Ward, municipally known as seventy seven Potter Road. The subject property is approximately nineteen hectares in area together with approximately three hundred ninety five meters of frontage. And is bounded to the northwest and south by the Crow River. The property is accessed from Potter Road, which is a municipally owned and maintained road. Located in the geographic area of Wallaston in the County of Hastings. The property is densely wooded and variable in topography. Existing structures on the property include a trailer, a storage shed and a privy, all of which are proposed to be removed in the spring of. Twenty twenty five as site preparation for new development takes place. A building permit has been issued for the construction of a one story modular dwelling. Having an area of sixty six point four square meters and a height of three point nine six meters. The applicant also proposes to install a private individual well and septic system. The subject application does propose to expand the permitted uses of the property to include a bunkhouse as an accessory use. To a dwelling house. The proposed bunkhouse would have an area of twenty two point three square meters and a height of three point three meters. Together with eleven point one square meters of attached decks. The application is also seeking to address a lot area deficiency. Specifically, the following relief is requested from the township zoning by law. Uh, from section seventeen point one to include a bunkhouse as a permitted accessory use. Section seventeen point two eight permit a minimum lot area of five point eight hectares. And section two point one nine to allow a bunkhouse as an accessory use to a dwelling house. As for the Planning Act, decisions on planning matters are required to be consistent with the provincial planning statement. And conform to or otherwise not conflict with the official plan. The subject property is considered rural lands under the policies of the P P S. Resource based recreational uses, including recreational dwellings for seasonal accommodation. Together with related accessory uses and buildings are permitted on rural lands. Development is to be sustained by rural service levels and appropriate to existing or planned infrastructure. Given that the application was served to formalize and facilitate the continuation of the existing recreational residential use of the property. And that the property can be adequately serviced by private individual and sewer. Sorry, private individual water and sewage systems, the application is not anticipated to result in a strain on rural service levels and infrastructure. The application is considered consistent with the P P S. The subject property is designated rural and environmental constraint under the local component of the official plan for North Cortha. Generally, residential development is to be directed to hamlets, however, a single detached dwelling and. Associated accessory buildings are a permitted use of the rural designation. Minimum distance separation requirements uh, are not applicable as it appears that no farm operations exist in proximity to the subject property. The application therefore does not conflict with the general intent of the official plan. The subject property is similarly zoned rural and environmental constraint under the township's zoning by law. The application seeks to permit a bunkhouse as an accessory use. Um, on the portion of the property zoned rural. Whereas the provisions of the RU zone otherwise uh, exclude a bunkhouse from the permitted uses. The proposed bunkhouse would enhance the functionality of the property for residential use. And would be constructed and used in compliance with the applicable provisions of the zoning by law. Necessary site alteration and vegetation removal is anticipated to be minimal. As the structure is minor in scale and is proposed to be near the dwelling. The proposed bunkhouse is therefore considered an appropriate accessory use for the subject property. The construction of the dwelling is to be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the proposed bunkhouse. Uh, to ensure that the bunkhouse will be considered as an accessory use to that dwelling. Section three point one six of the zoning by law provides that any land zoned environmental constraints are not considered towards the lot area. The portion of the lot zoned rural is approximately five point eight hectares. Uh, whereas the minimum required lot area is ten hectares. The path of the Crow River results in several surrounding properties. Uh, similarly being comprised of the rural and environmental constraint zones. In similar proportion to the subject property. Despite the undersized character of the lot, it does maintain sufficient area and configuration for the proposed development. All of the required yards will be exceeded and the total lot coverage of zero point one seven percent. Uh, is minimal and compliant. The application is therefore considered to uphold the general intent and purpose of the zoning by law. Agencies have been received from the Ministry of Transportation and Crow Valley Conservation Authority. Um, neither authority objects to the zone amendment application. Um, the property is outside of the M T O's permit control area, um, but Crow Valley does note that they would need some. Further details to determine whether um, a work permit is required to be issued for the construction of the proposed bunkhouse. Um, no public comments uh, regarding the application have been received uh, to date. Staff therefore find that the application represents good planning and it is recommended that application Z A twelve twenty four be approved. That's my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Emily, and I will ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to speak. On this matter. And I see Curtis has shown up, good morning, could you please state your name?
Yes, uh, this Curtis is from Three Hills Engineering. And uh, um, just for the record, I am not driving, I've pulled over, so. Um, the convenience of these Zoom meetings is wonderful for us, uh, consultants that are busy running the roads. Um, yeah, I I don't have any additional input, um, Emily gave a good uh. Uh, brief of it, and uh, if there are any questions, uh, we'll attempt to answer them.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you very much. Um, okay, at this point, I would ask if there are any members of the public that are here that would like to provide comment on this application. Just gonna put up your little electronic hand or turn your video on. And I don't see anyone that wants to. Comment on this, so I'm gonna turn it over to council members, questions, comments, or perhaps you're prepared to make a motion. Anyone? Uh, Jim Whalen, please go ahead. Oh, you're on mute, Jim.
Jim O'Shea might have a question, I don't know, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, Jim O'Shea, do you have a question?
Um, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, my question was, this property is completely surrounded by the Crow River. Uh, any problems with uh, flood plain or anything like that?
Curtis, you want to answer?
Um, yeah, no, there is uh, there is access and the the building zone. That um, they are within is outside the floodplain. Um, there is the floodplain on the property, but that's encompassed within the environmental zoning, so. The rural zoning is outside of that and uh, there's no uh, no new access, so it's um. Yeah. No, uh, no change to any of the environmental or floodplain stuff.
Okay, Emily, did you have anything to add?
Uh, nope, I would agree with um, Curtis's assessment, yes, uh, I I believe that the um. The floodplain area would be covered by the environmental constraint zoning on the property and again, the bunkhouse is to be located well outside of that.
Okay, excellent, thank you, um, any other questions? If not, I'm gonna go to Jim Whalen, uh, please go ahead with your motion.
Thanks very much, Madam Chairman, and uh, I move that applications Z A dash twelve dash twenty four be approved by council.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Moved by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? That motion is approved, all right, thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Yes, thanks guys, have a good day too.
Thank you, and thanks Emily, that was uh, three for three, and Connie, I'll have you read out the bylaw for this one, please.
Goodbye, Mayor, a bylaw to amend zoning by law twenty six twenty thirteen for the lands described as part of lot thirty two. Concession ten geographic area of Shandos. County of Peterborough, roll number fifteen thirty six zero one zero 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 three three zero three two zero.
All right, can I have a mover for that bylaw, please? Moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Colin, all those in favor? That bylaw has been approved, and with that, I will declare that we are out of statutory public hearing. And we will carry on with the uh, the remainder of the business items on our agenda. Uh, next up, we have uh, Peterborough County report. It's pretty brief, it was a short meeting that we had last time, um, county received a uh. Update on the Ward Street widening project in Bridge North. And we also authorized the community emergency preparedness grant that was received. To be used to develop a deployable emergency operation center. to be used to develop a deployable emergency operation center, mobile clinic um, that can be used for emergencies or quite crisis events um throughout the county. And um, we're also going to uh, uh, we also did pass a motion that we're gonna discuss a little bit later on down in the consent agenda um, with respect to uh, the tariffs and and uh, provincial trade and all of that. But we'll, we'll, we can speak to that when we get to it in the, in the consent agenda. Um, I don't know if there's anything else, Jim, that you wanted to add on that. It was a pretty brief meeting, but tomorrow's looks pretty, pretty intense. I'll be talking about the recycling uh, contract and all of that.
Oh, I um, I, that's all the stuff I had listed.
Okay, perfect. If any questions or comments on that? If not, a motion to uh, receive uh, the verbal report, verbal county report moved by Jim O'Shea, seconded by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? That's been received. Colin, do you have a Crow Valley report for us?
I, I too will be very brief today because we haven't had a meeting, but um, March, uh, the first meeting in March, I'll have a report on the sort of first meeting as chair that I've hosted. So, um, and again, non-report for this meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm not even gonna have a motion to receive that now report. We'll just carry on. Look forward to your next one. Okay, uh, adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting of council that was held on February fourth. If there are no errors or omissions, can I have a motion to adopt those minutes, please? Moved by Jim O'Shea, seconded by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? Those minutes have been adopted. And as we discussed at the beginning of our meeting, uh, we do have business arising from previous minutes. And it is the um Minister's Letter Regarding Social and Economic Prosperity Review. Uh, I think it was Colin who tweeted a little bit to make it uh, reflect, uh, you know, North Coortha, the impact that it has specifically on our community. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to read it. Um, and if there are no questions or comments on that, can I have a motion for us to approve sending that letter? Moved by Jim O'Shea, seconded by Ruth Ann. Any questions on that? No. All those in favor? That letter's been approved. All right. Thank you for that. And I'm gonna scroll back up here. Um, now we're on to the consent agenda. And I do have um, requests, we're gonna pull out number two and number four. Is there anything else that anybody wants to pull out? Uh, okay, so then first we'll go then to uh, number two. And this is from Halton Hills regarding um, resolution regarding sovereignty of Canada. I'm sure unless you're living under a rock, we all know what's going on and what has been going on. And uh, these are some uh, interesting times, shall we say, for our country. And I was wondering uh, whether or not council would like to consider um, supporting the resolution from Halton Hills. I, I think uh, you know, as I said, we're all sort of uniting together under what is perceived very legitimately as, as a threat to our sovereignty. So, any questions or comments, Colin?
Yes, I, I, I don't really think it even needs to be said, but I'll absolutely be in support of it. Um, the, the, the more we can be behind it, the better. But uh, I, I, I feel like everybody's on board, which is a good feeling. Like this is a, we, we already feel pretty united, I think.
I agree. I agree. But it, every little bit helps, right? So Colin, do you wanna have, uh, wanna make that motion to support it then?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Wonderful. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? That is approved. And then number four is resolutions regarding the proposed uh, US tariffs on Canadian goods. Um, we originally had passed the motion at county council February fifth, but there was some amendments and some changes. I know staff works uh, and and uh, and the warden and deputy warden worked hard to make sure that the wording was correct. And um, but Jim uh, Whelan uh, did make a point that he thinks that uh, the motion that we have on our agenda is not the, the amended version of it. Um, so my suggestion is, you know, for council to consider supporting the motion from the E O W C. Bonnie is the chair of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. And you can see the wording is, is, it's still addressing the same issues, but it, the wording has changed and been updated. So Jim, did you wanna speak to that?
Well, I, just to, just to say that Bonnie wrote me back and said, um, she'll let me know if she's gonna get it clarified.
Okay, well, then you know what? We can always look at it for the next meeting, specifically from the county. But I, I would suggest uh, you know, if council's in support, that we could uh, pass a resolution supporting the E O W C motion regarding uh, the uh, proposed tariffs. Move by Jim Whelan, seconded by Colin, you have a question?
Uh, very briefly with comment, um, even though we don't sort of always feel entirely connected to the United States here, I was surprised when they, somebody released a sort of tariff exposure index highlighting how exposed different cities across Canada are. Um, locally Belleville was uh, actually eleventh in Canada and Peterborough was seventeenth across Canada as far as cities impacted by this. So, um, it, it is gonna have a real impact close to home.
Yeah, for sure. I attended a lunch with um, county and city uh, with the warden and the mayor. Um, the US consulate general was visiting in our region and uh, very interesting. There's a lot of ties. Um, this is, this is huge. And it's a negative impact, not only for, for our community and for our country, but also for uh, the United States as well. Um, it's uh, yeah. Anyway, okay, uh, I have a motion. Um, it's uh, duly seconded. All those in favor? That is approved as well. Okay. And I, I'm looking at the time, but I'm feeling like we can kind of carry on here and uh, and get through the, the balance of the agenda. So I'm just gonna push forward. Um, okay, so we're on to staff reports requiring, oh, no. I need to have a motion to receive the balance of the consent agenda. I forgot to do that. Move by Colin, seconded by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? That has been received. Okay, and now we'll go on to staff reports requiring action. First up, we have uh, under building is draft animal control. There's a report there for the new bylaw. And there's Matt. Good morning, Matt. Welcome. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Members of Council. Uh, you have before you a report regarding um, a new animal control bylaw, um, and a change in fees for the uh, the animal control licensing, uh, their dog licensing program. Um, so there was a meeting back in November of two thousand twenty four um, where Deborah Hagg, um, the animal control officer came in and uh, was reviewing processes. Um, and one of the items that came out of this was a potential of going to a uh, lifetime dog licensing. Um, and that, that might uh, um, be helpful uh, for a, a number of reasons um, that are laid out in the report. So it may encourage those that uh, don't currently have dog licenses. If it's a one-time fee, it may encourage those to uh, to actually obtain a license. So if their dog is running at large, um, that the owner can be found easily. Um, but uh, there may be in the long term, a reduction in fees that are, are brought in as a result of the um, the lifetime dog tag licensing. Um, but uh, initially it may be a, an increase in, in fees off the start um, due to it being a higher fee. So we're proposing a, an increase in fee up to forty dollars for an annual. Um, there's certainly not an annual and a lifetime tag. Um, so instead of the, the ten dollar annual tag um, that we currently have. So the other item that came out of um, this animal control um, bylaw review was that the animal control officer was um, their appointment was within the bylaw itself. So we're, we're hoping to uh, do a separate bylaw to appoint Deborah Hagg um, in a separate bylaw rather than within the animal control bylaw. Um, so that's uh, there is a separate uh, item later on for um, an appointment um, bylaw for her. And that's the reason for it.
That's great. Okay, thanks, Matt. Uh, all right, I turn it over. Council members, you got questions, comments on this? Anyone? Colin?
Yeah, so sort of related to this and the discussion that we had when Deborah was here. Um, one thing that surprised me, the more I've thought about it, is that we're unable to report back to the complainant um, about what has happened. I know in criminal matters, there's often follow-ups from the police. Um, e- even internally, when I was downstairs, I was looking at our HR policies for harassment. And if someone files a harassment report within North Coortha, we follow up with the person that filed the complaint. And I'm just wondering why it's sort of in between those two levels um, at the municipal animal control level, we're not able to communicate that information back.
Go ahead, Matt.
I was just gonna say, so with regards to any bylaw complaints, um, our, our policy has been um, you know, accepting the complaint, um, let them know that we'll address it. But if there's further issues to contact us, um, the only time that further information will be provided is if it's going through a court process. Um, then, and that's, um, you know, that's pretty standard for, for most law enforcement. I think you'd find is you don't find out what, what's actually being done um, until there's a court process involved.
All right, uh, Ruth Ann, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, that's what happened to me. I never got in, got any information after, I think, three, three thefts that I had, right? So, um, I know they went to court, but nobody notified me the results or me of that. Also, the second one I wanted to bring up is that there's some people who I believe genuinely don't know that they need a dog license. And I think maybe a little bit of education in that matter might be helpful as well. Uh, at first I said, come on, you're kidding me, right? You have to know, but apparently it is genuine with some people.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, Sam. Uh, sorry, Matt, I was actually just eh, kind of gonna jump onto that because I was thinking as I was reading through the report that uh, and with these changes, it might be maybe a good idea for, do a little mayor's video update. Um, perhaps get together with Deborah and talk about uh, the changes that, that, and I think the changes do make sense, Matt. I think, you know, going to a lifetime fee, yeah, yep, we're, you know, we're not making as much money, but that's not necessarily our goal when it comes to uh, the dog licenses. And it's less administrative burden and we're not looking to, to destroy unused licenses. But I think uh, Ruth Ann, you're correct. If we raise some public awareness about this, you'll have more people um, you know, getting their dog's license and uh, and, and that's a good thing. So, Matt, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's been some communication in the office uh, regarding using social media to get that message out. We were kind of waiting to see, you know, how this meeting went and what message we should be sending out. So, um, but yeah, definitely there will be some uh, some social media um, messages sent out um, and put on the website to indicate that there has been a change as well.
All right, uh, Jim O'Shea.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to me to uh, have a lifetime license for um, any animal, really. Um, a yearly one. People will simply forget from year to year to uh, renew their license. But lifetime, good idea.
Yeah. This is an excellent reducing red tape move. All right, um, all right, there is a recommendation that uh, council passed the proposed uh, revised animal bylaw, uh, animal control bylaw and repeal bylaw twenty twenty two dash two zero zero two eight. Somebody like to make that motion, please? Move by Colin, seconded by Jim O'Shea, all those in favor? That is approved. All right, thank you for that, Matt. And is there another one under here for you as well? Do you have the next one? The chief uh, building official bylaw enforcement officer, the appointment bylaws. You wanna do that one? Is that you?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can do that as well. Yeah. So, uh, this is also something that came up as a result of uh, the appointment bylaw for Deborah Hagg. Um, there is uh, a, um, a statute that was changed or actually was repealed. Um, and uh, a new one took, took place. So this is to clean that up. It's a housekeeping item. Um, there is some, some backdating in the um, in the bylaw and um, through conversations with the municipal solicitor, that's been something that uh, is acceptable and doesn't cause any uh, any harm.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? It's pretty much a housekeeping thing, so. Jim, you wanna make that motion?
No, I, I think of, it might be a little bit of a red herring, but um, um, we've got a recommendation from the um, report that we got uh, to join these things again, which would also make them uh, you know, to do with the uh, planning. Um, is this, is this something we're gonna do and then have to redo it again?
Sorry, with planning, I, I'm I, I'm not following that.
My, my thought is to keep the planning separate, but uh, you know, all I'm saying is it's up to council and council may vote to uh, separate them like the uh, uh, recommendation is from our, our uh, whatever you call the plan we just got.
Um, this, we're on the report for just to um, to appoint Matt as the CBO and uh, it's just changing it because the legislation changes the, under the, the Police Services Act and, and the appointment.
I know, I, I know what we're under, um, but
But there's no, nothing about planning on this, Jim.
Oh, I know there isn't. That's what I mean.
I know, but, but
What if, what if we join planning and, and um, um, building official again?
That won't have any bearing on, on this. This is our appointment bylaw for appointing us as our appointment in the position. Um, it's uh, it's essentially mainly for the bylaw enforcement position. It's not something that doesn't really have any bearing on the chief building official. Um, under the Police Services Act, that's what granted the authority for the town council to um, to appoint um, bylaw enforcement officers to enforce uh, the bylaws. So this is uh, to clean up um, that issue.
Move the recommendation.
Okay, perfect. All right. Uh, is there a second for that? Seconded by Colin, all those in favor? That is approved. All right. Thank you, Matt. And moving on now to, well, it's gotta be something to do with Mackenzie because she just popped on my screen. Good morning. It's uh, the introduction of the virtual town hall and citywide software systems. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, this is gonna be pretty short and sweet, um, just a report um, to get this on the books. So, um, we've got two pieces of software here, our virtual town hall, which integrates with our Great Plains system and PSD Citywide. Um, the softwares don't necessarily have a lot to do with each other, but I wanted to ask for um, a, a closed session to introduce council to both pieces of software and uh, do a little bit of training and uh, a little bit of knowledge about what they do and what they'll do for the public. Um, so I've recommended uh, the next council meeting, March fourth, twenty twenty five. But uh, I'm open to a different date if council prefers.
Um, how long do you anticipate that uh, the training would take?
Uh, I don't think it'll be too long. I'm thinking thirty, forty-five minutes, maybe.
Oh, okay. All right. So yeah, as long as I, I don't know, I'm not sure what the, the agenda uh, looks like for the next meeting. And that would be my only thing, if it was just really packed, but I don't see an issue with it. Ruth Ann?
I was just gonna say that Emily and I have a CIP meeting that day at two, but I, I think we could probably reschedule it for a better time. If you think it might go past two. We won't know, I guess, until.
Yeah, exactly.
From now.
Well, I, I think um, maybe what we could do is maybe rather than specify the date with this recommendation, just say that uh, council, um, you know, just to, that we have a um, a closed session meeting to, for the purpose of educating and training members um, of council on virtual town hall and citywide computer software. Um, at, you know, the, the first available or the first most appropriate meeting, I guess, right? Just in case, right? So rather than lock us into, to the next meeting and then maybe having to change it if we find that there's too much, right? Ruth Ann?
I was just gonna, not that it's all about me, but I am gone from March tenth to April seventh. So I'm just wondering if maybe March fourth is keeping it better and I can adjust the CIP.
Well, council, what do you wanna do? We wanna make it for March, uh, March fourth and regardless, uh, Jim Whelan?
Move the recommendation for the fourth.
There we go.
So if uh, Ruth Ann can't make it, we'll uh, try and live without her.
Oh, I'll be there, Jim.
I know you will.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, Ruth Ann, you'll second it? Okay, perfect. Uh, all those in favor? That motion is approved. All right. See you on the fourth then, Mackenzie.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Okay. Awesome, okay. And now we're under administration and it's a letter of support for the county cap application. I think everybody has has read that. Um, I don't see Edward here, um but I mean, anybody have any questions or comments? Basically, it's to have me send a letter saying, yes, we wanna do this. Uh Connie, please go ahead. You're on mute though.
Edward's actually here.
Pardon?
Good morning.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's so teeny tiny, it's a very thin strip across the top above Jim O'Shea, but I see ya. Okay, sorry, Edward, go ahead.
Good morning, Eric. Yes, so yeah, that's um like you says, based in uh looking for layers, support this application uh for this conference. I hope, I'm hoping here it's one of a few in initiatives that uh that we're able to work here with with uh the new county economic development department here in twenty twenty five.
All right, any questions or comments? Robert on that? If not, there is a recommendation. Who wants to move it? Moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Jim Whelan, all those in favor? That is approved. All right, get me that letter, Edward, and I'll sign it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. That was quick. All right, and now we are going on to reports from boards and committee uh committees. Uh, there are the minutes from the Community Improvement Plan Committee from December ninth. Any questions or comments on that? If not, a motion to receive those minutes, please. Moved by Jim Whelan, seconded by Colin, all those in favor? Those minutes have been received and we just have the one uh correspondence action item on there and that's the Resolution Regarding Provincial Regulations Needed to Restrict Keeping of Non-Native Exotic Wild Animals. Uh, this is information uh when uh uh we were at Roma, Ruth Ann and I uh um, we're going through the uh the exhibitors and um, there was a this group here that was uh trying to get this legislation passed and it was pretty interesting and we've had some some discussions and and talks about this in the past, nothing specifically within our municipality that I'm aware of, um but certainly neighboring municipalities, some challenges around it. And and as you can see from the the background information that was provided, the province of Ontario is way behind when it comes to this kind of thing. Um, and also too, we, I know we've been dealing with the animal control bylaw uh uh issue on this agenda and we do have a a very old menagerie bylaw that we did direct staff to to look into and and bring something forward. I know staff's working on that to uh have it updated, but at the same time, I mean, it really behooves us to uh get the province to step up and and uh and uh pass the regulations that are that are really needed to restrict the keeping of exotic animals, so. Questions, comments on this? I see, Matt, you popped on the screen. Do you wanna? You got something to say about lions and tigers and bears?
Good morning again. Um, just wanted to let you know that it is something that's on my docket for review. Um, I've been compiling some information and and hope to bring back something in the near future with regards to uh either an amendment to our bylaw, probably just to repeal our existing and bring in a new uh bylaw for that.
Okay, no, that's great. Um, hang on, get back on there. Any other uh questions or comments on that? Otherwise, I'm looking for uh a motion for us to uh pass this resolution. Uh, moved by Jim O'Shea. Seconded for that, seconded by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? That is approved. All right, thank you very much. We don't have any closed session. We just have the bylaws now and Connie, could you read those out for us, please?
Madam Mayor, a bylaw for the regulating and licensing of dogs and cattle operations and for the prohibiting and regulating the running at large of dogs and to repeal bylaw twenty twenty two zero zero two eight. A bylaw to appoint Deborah Hag as the animal control officer for the enforcement of provisions under the animal control bylaw. A bylaw to appoint a chief building official and bylaw enforcement officer for the municipality and to repeal bylaw twenty twenty four zero zero four zero. Bylaw to appoint a building inspector and bylaw enforcement officer for the municipality and to repeal bylaw twenty twenty two zero zero six one.
All right, and I have a motion for those bylaws, please. Moved by Jim O'Shea, seconded by Ruth Ann, all those in favor? Those bylaws have been approved and a motion to confirm proceedings of today's meeting. Moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Jim O'Shea, all in favor? We have been confirmed and a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Jim O'Shea, seconded by Ruth Ann, thirded by Colin. That's approved. Thanks, everyone. This went really well.